All right. I call to order the regular code enforcement board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. Roll call.
Chair. Vice Chair.
Here.
Here.
Board. Panky.
Here.
Amelia Olmer.
For everyone to please. I would like to ask. Bow our heads and. Bid farewell. Fellow board members. Jim Thompson. And is no longer with us. That. Your. Your. Your prayers. Of. Of our community. That you. Think of Jim.
Certainly. One nation.
Deputy Chief. Good evening. Have any change?
Yes, we do this time. Number. Hundred has come. We have removed it.
Okay. And will the other?
Yes, sir.
You.
Thank you.
Are all in. Of the.
Agenda with the removal of. Case. Twenty five CE. Two, four, eight.
Second.
A second.
Aye.
Aye. Any. We have an empty. Code. In testimony. These rights to be sworn.
And do you swear from? And nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Guys. And. Thank you for. Easy. Court, that's a great addition. Our. Has reviewed the. From our last.
With the motion to approve them.
No changes.
I said.
Board member Gala. Member Capra.
Aye.
Panky.
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair Gildan.
All right. This case.
Mr. Chairman, before. Have a. Question concerning our agenda. It has to do with the. I. In my homework. All. Word before. To. Legal officer. Be. Even. Separate individual cases can. Consideration. If someone's been. Owner's been guilty of. Station for multiple. Can that be? Can we consider the?
Certainly. The non-compliance. To consider. Previous testimony. Sers and then for. To consider the previous. And order. Chosing fines and liens. And it is, it's part. Consider in making. About maybe. For compliance and how much. If some. Consider is. Previous violation to the same people on the.
Okay, that's what I. Vision, thank you for that.
Question, thank you.
That's right, that's right, the. Up to $500. Beginning on the date. Of the.
All right. Our. For. Case twenty. CE. Three, two, three.
Thank you. Chris. After with the city of Winter Springs sworn. Us this. Be submitted as part of. Record. First agenda item. For two, zero, two, five CE zero. Three, two. Property. Thirty one north. Violation of IPM. Section three. One accumulation of rubbish. This is a. A summer. January. Look hearing was held before. Code enforcement board and. Were found in. At that time. Nation of rubbish or. On six international. And issue. The ground. Repeat. Twentieth, twenty twenty five, I conducted. Based on citizens. Observed accumulations of. Debris on. One through five. There's rubbish and debris. Including. Just kind of very. In the front yard area. Metal scraps. Exhibit four. Trailer in. An area in the driveway. And exhibit five. And. Twenty twenty five. And notice of hearing was sent. In mail, return receipt. On February twentieth. Twenty twenty five, notice of. Hearing were. Property owners. Twentieth, twentieth. Property and found. Six through. Exhibit. Exhibit. Junk and debris. And exhibit eight. March twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the violation had been corrected. Exhibit nine. Exhibit nine of the reinspection. See here. Appears we have a technical difficulty. All right, there we go. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the code enforcement board find the respondent had a repeat violation of section three oh eight point one accumulation of rubbish or garbage of the twenty twenty four international property maintenance code for a period beginning February twentieth, twenty twenty five and continuing until March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five and consider the imposition of a fine of up to $500 per day for the thirty four days the property is found to be in violation for the repeat violation. That concludes my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
Have you been able to talk to the respondent?
Yes, I spoke to the respondent, I'm guessing it was after he received the notices. He advised that, you know, he has junk and debris in the, in the back of the property and he occasionally brings it out into the front, into the truck and the trailers and in the front to get picked up and he's just working on cleaning it up and I advised him, well, if you're getting it, getting it, getting it removed, it has to be removed from the property, it can't just sit in the front of the property, that's where you start having your, your violation and in this case, it's a repeat because it's been to the code enforcement board already.
We had somebody show up here as.
Can you first stand and be sworn in, please?
Do you swear affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris. Okay, first off, touching base on the repeat offender, which see the dates, it was definitely over a year. I did, I was fined, I did pay my fines. I believe that's like trying someone for the same case, something that they did their time or paid their fine, you know, sure, it came again, it's very minor compared to how it was a year ago, that was, and, and the definition of trash is something with no value at all, and if we look on that trailer, which I have pictures of everything also, you've seen a blower, a bag of cement, something that came home from work with me the day before, something of value, the air conditioner, which somebody just gave to me, because my air conditioning unit's out, so it had to go in a window, also on those dates, I was hospitalized and a near death, I mean, really got sick, my liver, called Billy Rubin, which, you know, I won't get into all that, the blood cells, and I was hospitalized and unable to work for almost three months. I did work, but they told me not to work because I had to, to pay my, to pay my debts and, you know, stay alive, pay my phone bill, keep the electric on. He said he contacted me several ti- or more times, there was only one contact after I received the mail. Okay, the, it's took ten days from the violation date for me to get that letter, which that's putting ten days on that before I even know I'm in violation. If you offended a year ago, I, you should still get something on your doorknob or some type of communication to give you twenty four hours to correct the problem. I mean, the main thing is here to keep the houses in compliance, that's what I think, if it's not, if it's about money, then I think the system has a flaw. Communication, the lack of communication, the knowledge of compliance, all comes in here. They're being tried for the same case twice by bringing up the past and trying to hold that against me. I've lived in this house for thirty five years, yes, I was violated and paid fines three times. The first time I wasn't even living there, I paid, I was fined a hundred thousand dollars. I had to refinance my house. If we know the area where this is, and not to say lower income people can live like slobs, but we don't have garages, we don't have storage units, you know, one of the guys on the board where I don't see him here today, said his house never got like that before, but I'm sure, and I'm not speaking for anyone, you know, he has a lawn guy, he has a pool guy, he has probably a maid and a nanny, you know, I'm a single dad and have been for over twenty years, and go to work and work ten hours, and now I picked up a night job, so there's sometimes, yes, I unload my vehicle, because it's the same vehicle I go to work with, I take some shovels and stuff out of it, my blower out, and I put on my soft fall umpire uniform and I go to another job and I get to home at ten thirty at night, and then get up and go to work the next day, so yes, it might sit there for two days before I can open the gate, move something. Now, the trailer, the trailer itself, as we've seen, it's a landscape trailer, and you've seen a wheelbarrow on there, you've seen a blower on there, you see landscape stuff on there, just like the neighbor next door has a boat on his trailer, so it's a boat trailer. Another guy has a pressure cleaner trailer, he has a pressure cleaner and a tank on that, that is what that trailer is for, trailer shouldn't have to be empty and you shouldn't be able to tell what you can keep in the back of your truck. Sure, you want it to look good, and I cleaned it up, because I agree, you know, but if I have a ladder and a blower or something that goes to work with me every day, if I have to take that out, bring it in the backyard, it's just making my day so much harder every day to load and unload all that stuff every single day. Last violation a year and a half ago that he did violate me and I haven't had none till this recent, I was doing really good till I got sick, it was a dryer, which I haven't even replaced yet, because every time I finally get a little bit of money, like I'm bringing a truck out to get fixed, a transmission, because I'm working out of a car, so I'm dependent upon my employee to tow my trailers every time, so I can't even, I'm really dependent on other people, so I'm finally getting a transmission done, because I had $2,000 put away, it's going to cost me about four, but they're going to work with me, so every time I get to that point to fix something, to move on, I get fined. I refinanced my house twice now, which I'm sixty one, which is putting me working another ten years till my house is paid off and can, you know, possibly live on the twelve hundred bucks a month are going to, which impossibly, but to even, everything has gone up, you know, to the cost of living from what, you know, I can't retrain myself at sixty one, I can pick up little jobs like umpiring and do different things, try to make more money. I feel there's a little bit of targeting going on, I don't see all these other houses I have pictures of that have trailers and different things on the docket at all, I don't know, maybe there's something going on with them, but it's been weeks and weeks, and people even parking semi trucks one street over on their front lawn, five vehicles on their front lawn. It's a little side thing, my son also got noted, he lives somewhere else, at unoperable vehicle, this is a vehicle he drives every day and he tows my trailers with, it's not unoperable, because it doesn't look like your vehicle, nothing against Chris, I think it's more the system, I think it's a little bit of communication with Chris, he did, you know, it took ten days to get back with me after I said, hey, the, I noticed, my wife's seen you taking pictures, I cleaned it up that same day, it was, you know, clean on the twenty seventh, and it took ten days for him to come and say, well, the stuff on the trailer and the stuff on the back of the truck, so I don't know that, so that communication is $500 a day, that's $5,000 just for them ten days. Like I said, it's lower income houses, we don't have everything like that, let me check my notes here, the trailer, boat, lawn equipment, yes, trash is something with no value. Yeah, one time got back with me and again I left a message, and I didn't even know I'm not in, that I'm in compliance now, until he just said it right here, because I left a message, he said he don't get text on that phone, so I left messages like I was supposed to. So that's really my whole story, I mean, I do have pictures, a lot of it's the same stuff besides, you know, the, how it looks now and the stuff that is on the, was left on the trailer. The only other pictures that you didn't see, and I'm not pointing fingers at other houses, are pictures of other houses that have the same, you know, have trailers with equipment on it that are not on the docket today.
Any questions? Have any questions for the respondent?
No, I will like to make a comment, and you are correct, this is about coming into compliance, not about us giving out fines, I recognize that you are in compliance, but the statement that you made, that you were not aware that you were. Not in compliance, you've been brought to this board for the same scenario prior, even if it's been a year, and that's part of our process is that we talk you through what is the in violation, so that there is a little bit of education going back and communication going back, so that it doesn't come back up again, and, yeah, we don't like seeing people come back multiple times, and I appreciate the fact that you, you are already back in compliance, and I think that has weighed in my opinion, but the biggest thing is making sure that a year from now, we're not saying the same thing.
Correct, understood, and, and the stuff that was in the non-compliance was in a trailer or in a truck, I mean, it wasn't laying around the yard and, and sure, the little air conditioning unit that sat there for two or three days, because I had to carry it, you know, to the back, you know, a couple little things, but there, it's always moving, it's not sitting there for long periods of time, but the thing is, that if you put the little hanging thing on the door and gave twenty four hours like you're going to give to someone else, just because I, a year and a half ago, I, you know, I was in non-compliance and I paid over $5,000 fine to clear that up, you know, I, I, I learned from that, but there's a fine line between when I'm coded and when I'm not, so I, it just, you could hang, just because I offended before, that means I don't get a little thing on the door to tell me to clean my yard, and like I said, it was all, and it's not trash, none of it was trash, it's all got value, and it was in a trailer or in a truck, so I think there's a, we got to define, you know, was there trash, or was it, you know, equipment? I even asked on the phone, is my golf cart that was in the picture, or my grandchild's four wheeler, is that a problem? He said, no, it's the stuff on the trailer and in the truck. So once I found that out, it was immediately cleaned up, so it's, it's all communication, I didn't know I was in violation.
Question that I, that I need to ask you, when, the last time, when you were, when you were first found to be, not, you know, non-compliant, and, and you were ultimately fined, do you recall in the notice that you got to inform you with that, that if you should, that should this offense repeat, you would be subject to a, potentially subject to a higher fine and no warning?
I didn't, not the no warning, but yes, a higher fine, yes, and that was, the time I was in here before is when you guys established the amount and that, you know, it could be up to, but then the board, you know, can also lower it. So, yeah, I did, I did know about, I could be fined the full amount or higher, that it went up from two fifty a day to five hundred a day, but not that I would not be notified I was in violation, that's, it's a guessing game that.
It's not a guessing, the, the, I, is, we tried to explain to you before, the idea here is to, is to come into compliance and then stay in compliance, it doesn't do you any good, it doesn't do anybody any good, if you're in compliance today, and then next month you decide to go out of compliance for whatever the reason, and then you get your, you, you, you get, and you, you keep coming in and out of compliance, the idea, we want you in compliance the whole time, because that's what keeps our, our, our property values up, that's what keeps us looking as this desirable city that we want to be, and I, I, I think you, I'm sure you feel the same way.
No, that is understood.
You, you, you don't want to be bothered by code enforcement every other day saying, hey, you have this, hey, you have that, it's just easier, the easiest way to do it, instead of taking it and leaving it, just put it someplace where it can't be seen.
Yes, and that's why I'm cleaning my backyard, and like he said, also, I was, I have a, you know, a small gate, I had to fix my fence last time, a year or so ago, so I have a small gate on that side, the other side don't have a gate, so I either got to go through the house to get things into the backyard, but the backyard was a mess, I have taken down over twenty broken fence panels, we got all new fence, three quarters of the way around, except for the right side, which my neighbor's about to put up vinyl, so I need to pull that fence down, so I, I'm recently, presently, putting up a fence, because I have a pool, I'm putting up a, moving my fence over ten feet, so that side won't even need a fence, so I can take everything out of there and have access to the backyard and be able to back my trailer up all the way in the backyard, and so I need to pull my travel trailer out, which then I'm going to be coded, it might be a day or two days, it might take three days for that other company to come in and put up the neighbor's fence, so it's little things like that in the movement of it, if it's going to sit there for a month, yes, I'm in violation, if I knew, you know, things are moving, it's not sitting there for a month, nothing is.
I, frankly, I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for the board, I can tell you that, for, for, for me, I am very thankful that you are, that you're trying to keep your property up, that you, that, you know, you see stuff and you're making it, you're making a concerted effort to fix your fences and to have things go right. All I ask is that to prevent you from being, from coming back here over and over again, don't let this stuff stay there even for a day, just, when, when it comes, just take it to the backyard or take it wherever where it can't be seen, and you won't be in front of the board again.
Right, I don't, I don't work a nine to five job, I work, I'm self-employed, so I go to work and I might get off at six thirty or six o'clock and have to be at the ball field, the umpire, which I get paid for, at six thirty, so, sure, I took shovels out, I put my bag in the back, and it sits there, I come home at ten thirty, and, you know, if I go to work the next morning, yes, it sits there for a day or so, but I, I do that, I work both jobs, you know, three nights, three nights and weekends, I work the night job, so it's, it's not, I'm lazy or I'm leaving it there, it's a time thing sometimes of being able to get back to it, I'm, I'm between a rock and a hard place with, you know, how I let things build up, and I, it's, everything is getting better and better every day right now, but it's, I'm, I'm, you get in a hole that you can't get out of sometimes, and that's, that's where I was, and I'm showing so much progress in the back, that sometimes, yes, I'm, I'm bringing fence sections out, I'm breaking them up, putting them in a trash can or putting them in a trailer, but it's seven, eight at night, I can't take that trailer to the dump that day, and then I also have to work the next day, so it's, might be till the weekend, so. So it's a time thing sometimes.
Can we just put, I want to go over, because I want to respond to your 24-hour thing or, so I want to go over the summary of events as you posted them on these slides, Officer Elbon. And I do appreciate you being here, too.
I always show up.
We do appreciate that because not everybody shows up. Because we need to understand your circumstances.
That's what I say, it's communication, it's a little of the system, it's a little of communication.
Sure.
So we, go ahead.
January 23rd, 2024, that's when one of the previous cases, one of the previous hearings was held, in which the respondent was found in violation for accumulation of rubbish and debris and the Code Enforcement Board issued an order. And then on February 20th, 2025, that's when I responded to a citizen's complaint for an accumulation of rubbish and debris.
So that was, what, about a month between those two dates?
A year and a month.
No, that's an old violation and that's the new violation.
So this would have been...
That's when the new violation started, where it was 20, February 2025.
So the previous violation, the first violation was within the five-year time span as afforded by Florida Statute 162, establishing grounds for repeat violation. The, for this case, the complaint came in and inspection was performed February 20th, 2025. Notice was sent February 25th, 2025, and then received February 28th, 2025. So we're talking three days at that point. And then a re-inspection was performed March 20th, 2025 and found that it still remained in violation.
That's about three weeks.
Unknown, because it...
And then on March 26th, 2025, that's when it was found to be in compliance.
So those three weeks was, everything was cleaned up, but he wanted me to get the stuff off the trailer, said the trailer was the only thing in violation, then there was no rubbish, the air conditioning, none of that stuff. So I would say it was three days. And then I called and said, you know, I cleaned, the next day after I seen him taking pictures of the first, that violation, it was cleaned up. And by the time he got back with me, them 10 days, two weeks elapsed. How do I know?
In the previous case, this was discussed about with the property owner that doesn't matter if it's in a trailer, it's in a truck, if it's anywhere on the property. And to my understanding, it almost sounds like in your own admission that you still have junk and debris in your backyard.
My backyard is, I'm taking down fence sections, old fence sections and disposing of them. But besides that, I had some aluminum cans that I just went to the trans, the scrap metal and scrapped. So no, there was no debris, it was all something of value. I got $135 for the cans. And that is equipment on the trailer, there's no trash there. And the violation, a year ago, you were talking about the firewood that I had going to Johnny Morgan's house, that he was buying firewood off me. So, I mean, if I'm a tree guy and I come home with tree stuff on my trailer and it goes to the dump and maybe the next day it comes home until I can go to the dump again, I mean, it's not the same debris when I'm, when it's tree stuff. My equipment, yes, was the same equipment.
So...
Is it trash?
If it's not junk and debris, then, that's on the trailer, then why would it go to a dump?
The debris, tree debris, but it's not the same debris. I do trees every single day. So if I get a full load, I go to the transfer station or the landfill, dump it, I go back to work, I fill it with something else, I'm sure it looks the same to you, but it's a different job every time. I park my trailer there, I hook it back up, I go to the next job. So I haven't been bringing home any, any tree debris. And if you, the one pile that you showed of past, that was my own, when it had a little bit of pile of the yucca plants on the front lawn, that was my own yard that I was trimming. But until trash pickup.
Picture up for a moment. I'm still trying to understand this picture. Can you, perhaps you can explain to us, what are, what are we looking at?
Okay, what you're looking at on the trailer is a blower, a wheelbarrow, another wheelbarrow, a little bit of mesh because I had to filter some sand on a paver job. So I used that mesh to filter and clean the sand. And there's a ladder on top and a bag of cement down at the left. That's what's on that trailer. Behind it is a golf cart and leaning against my fence is a ladder. And the other stuff to the right is the neighbor's boat that he's storing on top of a trailer, which is not allowed, I guess you can't have nothing on your trailer. So that's what we see there, so I mean, there's not, none of that is trash unless that bag of cement got hard and I had to throw it out, it becomes trash. But it's, it's all work equipment.
Well, if I, if my memory serves me correctly, this is really your third time here at the board.
And living in the house in 35 years, yes.
Once in 23 January 24 for weeds, auxiliary structures and trash. Once in 23 April 24 in two separate cases, which involved trash motor vehicles. And then here, 22 April 25 for trash again. And I remember we spent a lot of time with you discussing, last time you were in front of the board, of the violation. And hoping that we wouldn't see you again, but here you are. So I'm not quite understanding what you're not understanding, that's a violation. At least put a tarp over it so you can't see anything that's on the trailer, at the very minimum.
Chris, you would be happy with that? That one, that one passed by you? I guarantee it would.
Well, it's not, not Officer Elbon's, but somebody complained and that's what generated all this. So...
I don't believe so.
I, I'll be honest, if that was in front of my neighbor's yard, I would call in and complain too.
Right.
Because I don't know what it is, I can make heads or tails of some of it. But to me, it looks like trash.
Right, I rent a little shop and it's all the way in Osteen where I keep my bobcat, my other trailers, so all I do is bring home my little trailer because it's just a little...
Yeah, I understand, people have work and, you know, they, they take things and they build things out of it and it becomes, you know, more valuable, things that you could help sustain yourself with. Not a problem. The problem is it's in front of your house, it's visible to your neighbors. And I don't know what else to do to try to help you understand that you can't leave it out there for weeks on end.
And I don't, I try not to, I mean, it's usually not, like I said, I did get sick and I was hospitalized. I don't drink, but I had a liver issue, liver failure, and I was near death, I was totally yellow. And, and I can prove all that with, you know, all the information and spent three months packing forth to the doctors before all this cleared up, changing my diet and it's expensive to eat healthy, so...
Believe me, I understand, I think everyone up here sympathizes with you.
I have no problem.
We have to be fair, too. And we, we could have other people come here with the same problems and have other kinds of issues. But the question here is what we're seeing as presented by evidence.
Right, but I was told I was not to have any trash. And like I said, equipment is not trash, anything with value is not trash. So, I mean, the bottom line on the statement or the system or the way it's worded, it was not trash and debris.
Well, I would have to defer to what the law says and what our code says and what our legal representative says to you.
Right, which I would have, if I'm going to be fined, I would like to get a continuance and get counsel to represent myself.
Can you give us a definition of what the code says here?
Sure. International Property Maintenance Code, as the code section referenced here, it's 308.1, exterior property and premises and the interior of every structure shall be free from an accumulation of rubbish or garbage. We can have maybe differences of opinion about what rubbish or garbage means. I would say that, you know, probably equipment like a leaf blower or the golf cart would not be rubbish or garbage, but, you know, maybe some other things from the image might be, something to...
I'd go to the dictionary.
Okay. I would say it would be up to the board to determine whether, based upon the original pictures that Officer Elbon presented, whether in your determination that represents rubbish or garbage or whether it, you know, might not meet that definition.
Thank you.
Can we go through the pictures one more time?
Please.
Can we do these slowly?
He's going back to the beginning.
Back to Exhibit 1 from February 20th, 2025. Exhibit 2...
Okay. What's the date, this is February 25?
Correct.
So there's an air conditioner out there of value? Okay.
And there's air conditioner and some other materials.
In the back, in the back of it, yes.
Exhibit 4. Can I pause you?
Then, so then, right in front of that gray van, in front of that gray van, what's all of that stuff?
That is the trailer itself. That's, you see the jack and that metal box is part of the trailer. There are two plant pots to the right of it with some palm fronds that are hanging off the palms. I had just trimmed my palm and the other picture he's shown, it had some banana leaves that were just trimmed off too. So that is the neighbor's fence section, which fell over in the wind. The white thing, that fell onto my golf cart. But that is a trailer, everything is contained inside that trailer besides a storage bin behind it. And, yeah, storage, there's a little, like, you can put shovels and rakes and stuff as storage bins.
Board, if I may?
Please.
So Chapter 2 of the International Property Maintenance Code defines rubbish and garbage. Garbage is animal or vegetable waste and then rubbish is any sort of waste material other than garbage. It includes wood, coal, combustible materials, paper, rags, cartons, boxes, wood, rubber, leather, tree branches, yard trimmings, cans, metals, other minerals, glass, that sort of thing. So garbage being sort of plants and animal waste, rubbish being kind of anything else that may not have, have use. So I would say, you know, equipment, as long as it is in functioning condition, probably not rubbish, but other things like yard trimmings or general debris or refuse would fall under that definition.
The respondent seems to think that something has value doesn't make it trash. Now, I kind of would argue that because I'd say, well, what if I put a toilet, a porcelain toilet, it has value and let's say it's got cracks in it and it's broken, it still has value.
Like you said, though, in working condition.
But I can't put it in my front yard and expect my neighbors to be okay with that. I think that would fall under the rules that we were just read.
Agreed.
Yeah, I would think that just because, just because you can turn around and take something to a salvage yard and get something for it, doesn't mean that it has intrinsic value.
No, I wouldn't, my historic scrap metal that was going and stuff like that, that's going to be scrapped in the front yard. But I'm saying my blower or my wheelbarrow or something that I use to make money with is not considered trash. And, but it's, I agree that systems should have something, where we cannot have that stuff in the front yard, but I was coded for trash and debris. Bottom line.
We are.
Okay.
Do you, do you want...
You want to go through the rest of the pictures?
Yeah, I was going to say photo the rest of the pictures, but before you go, do you have a...
Yeah, I just had a question, a clarification. Where is your property line in this photograph and are those pots yours?
Yeah, the pots are mine. The two empty pots are stacked upon each other, they were given to me and they came off, I moved them off the trailer and I set them there, they're not there now and they haven't been for a long time.
But that, the grassy portion or the vegetated portion, that is the property separation, the driveway that we're seeing in the foreground is your neighbor?
Say again?
The driveway that's on the right side of the photograph, that's your neighbor?
Yes, yes. Yes, that driveway, the little separation is my property. Them pots now are by my front door with a plant in it and growing a pineapple.
Okay. Yeah, the other thing that I wanted to comment about, I know that you kept saying about what your other neighbors do, what your other neighbors do and not to remain to this case. They have nothing to do with this case.
I agree and I said that too.
But parenthetically, just parenthetically, looking at this photograph and that boat that's not yours, it's your neighbor's, it's behind the front of the building, which means that it's not in violation of the code.
Well, that's, he's, also, Chris said my trailer was on the side of the house, which is good. He told me I could start there in '23. It's fine there because it's on the side of the house.
But it has to be past the front of the house.
Right, and that's where he said it was good, that it was on the side. I asked him if my trailer was good where it's at and I could bring it home, but I can't have anything in it, you know?
Or, or as he was, or as was recommended, covered with a tarp.
But I don't think that'll fly.
I don't know what's in it and I can't, I can't go, I mean, I'm not allowed to give you legal advice, that's not my role.
Right.
But if it's covered by a tarp, I can't go over to your house and lift up the tarp to look underneath to see what's in there. And if it's covered with a tarp, I doubt that people are going to complain about if it's covered with a tarp.
I think Chris would still violate me, don't you think? You don't think that, that'll fly by you, Chris?
So the, again, the IPMC, it talks about rubbish and debris on the property. I think if we start getting into allowing rubbish and debris or anything else just to be covered by a tarp, to say it's in compliance would be a very slippery slope to start down.
And, and Officer Elbon's not going around picking on anyone, including you. But this again came in as a report from your neighbor, so you need to be proactive and do things so that people, your neighbors aren't calling this in.
I totally agree with that. I, you know, I want it to be as clean as possible too. I'm not looking for little stipulations to get around it. I'm just saying, the way it was worded and what I was violated for, you know, was trash. I'm not justifying that I should be able to keep stuff out there. I'm not, I'm not going down that road. And the other things about the other neighbors and the pictures were not about what they do, but that I felt like I was being targeted. You know, because I offended a year ago, so now I have to walk, I have to live by different rules than everyone else.
Let me, let me ask you to pause for a second. I had intended to hear all the comments and the commentary back and forth before saying this, but you have been here before. When you were here, I do recall that we were fair, correct?
Yes, sir.
We, we were recommended what your fine should be, we adjusted that.
Yes, sir.
We worked very fairly with you, all right? I want to speak to this because your comments about being targeted, living in a poor neighborhood, these are all items that are irrelevant to us. The one thing that this board prides itself in is that you could be Donald Trump coming in here, excuse that analogy, or somebody that doesn't even have a home, that, with all the creature comforts, I'll call them, and they're getting treated the same, okay? We don't go after one class, we don't go after one race, we don't go after one person because of their economic position. And just so you understand that, and I want to say this before we get a ruling, whatever we decide is going to be fair and it's based on your situation, okay? We're not here to make you come in, we're all volunteering ourselves. So believe me, when, when you're in compliance and our night's short or we don't have to come in, that's great. And these guys do a phenomenal job in working with the community. Mr. Elbon, I'll speak on his behalf, he is not out trying to target you or not give you notification in a timely manner. I, I mean, I smile, I see him buzzing around the town in a truck... I see him buzzing around the town in a truck and I don't know how he does everything that he does. He's not trying to be unfair to you. So I, I just want to get away, and I'm saying it now just because I want to get away from the back and forth. We have a job to do. We want to go through the pictures one more time. Let us get through those, okay? And we'll come to a fair and agreeable.
Yeah, and the only reason I brought up that it's, you know, we're on the, I'm on the lower income side of Winter Springs, was saying that we didn't have garages, you know? Some don't have washrooms or carports. We don't have the storage of some of the bigger houses with the, you know, the access of a garage. And sure, if I had a garage, I'm sure I couldn't park a car in it because I would have all of my equipment and stuff in it. But I was just pointing that out that it's, you know, it's not the big, I don't have the square footage of some of the other houses.
I understand that. Nonetheless, you may not feel so, but I guarantee I could walk around and knock on some doors next to you and it's not their home, that's their castle. We all live in different environments. Everyone sitting up here probably lives in a different home, a different type and all. That's irrelevant to our job. And I'm not trying to downplay what you're saying. It's just, we have to come to a decision. We have to do it fairly. And we do have codes that the city abides to. And we're asked to make a decision on that. And that's what we want to do. So we're going to do it as fairly. And I'd like to do it as quickly as possible.
Yeah, just taking into consideration the thing about communication and the 10 days that elapsed before I, you know, I get a word back from Chris. And, you know, I call and don't get a return call and the letter, the time elapsed through the mail, just please take them things into consideration.
We take everything into consideration, sir.
I'm going to sit down if I could. I'm feeling a little.
You can, go ahead. Thank you.
Chair? Do you? I have a question of clarification only at this point. And that is, for repeat offenses, we have a five-year window.
That's correct.
Depending on the ruling today, does that potentially increase that five-year window yet again? Just that the respondent is well informed?
Yeah, that would start the five-year window again as a repeat of the same section from the date of today's ruling five years forward.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Board, are there any other questions?
What did we find him the last time?
We had $50 a day per the letter from January 2024. I think you're leading into the conversation that I was going to lead into. And, you know, I think we stick with what we had as a fine before. But we need to talk about days. The gentleman's claiming 10 days of no notice. What I hear in this, or read in the summary was eight days to give him some grace. And that was between when the letter was sent out and when he actually received it. But I think if we, there's ample evidence that it was in violation. We can disagree on the terms of rubbish and garbage, but if there was a violation there, it is in compliance. We want to keep it in compliance. So I don't think we need to give the full $500 because I think that would actually impose more hardship. And we will see him again because then he will be in hardship.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I would, I would not necessarily agree with the day counting because for a repeat violation, he's, he, there is no notice. His notice was a year ago. So I would, I mean, frankly, I would start from the day that Officer Elbon went out there, saw it, because that begins his clock. And his clock runs until the day that Officer Elbon says you're in compliance. So that's the window that I see that we're talking about.
And that's 34 days?
However many I didn't.
Is that what we're talking, Mr. Elbon?
Yeah, 34 days.
Correct. Under Florida Statute 162, for repeat, it's they observed because the prior notice explains that in there as far as how a repeat violation works.
Yep.
So when that notice is sent out, it explains that it's a repeat as well. So the timeline starts from the day of first observation and continues until there is the date of reinspection minus a day because it could be assumed that the day prior is when it was brought into violation.
Yep.
Or correction.
And the letter does state, any future reoccurrences of the violations addressed herein after same have been corrected may result in the finding of repeat violation as defined in the section that was just quoted in the Florida statutes. It may result in imposition of fines of up to $500 a day for each of those repeat violation. So I think it's clear enough in the notice that went out, and I would agree with you.
Any further question? Clarification? I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would move to find that, based on the photographs, testimony from the officer, testimony from the respondent show that, show that there, in fact, was a repeat violation of IPMC. Of IPMC 308.1, accumulation of rubbish or garbage. And that Respondent committed a repeat violation of that, of that IPMC. And that the repeat violation is currently corrected. Respondent corrected the violation on whatever date it was.
20 February 25.
The, the, the date that it was corrected is 3/26/25.
Right, March, on March 26, 2025. As a property was in repeat violation for a total of 34.
34 days.
34 days. A fine of the amount of $50 per day shall be imposed as a result of this repeat violation.
Can I say one thing? I just checked my phone to see when I called him and told him I was in violation and it was March 14. So for him to take a week back and say I'm.
Sir. Continue.
No, no, that, that was my motion.
Okay. And do I, any, before we hear a second, is there any conversation?
What is the total?
Discussion?
Yeah, what's the fine?
It's 34 times 50.
Yep. So $50 per day?
$50 per day times 34.
Okay.
Chair, I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Christian, or, I'm sorry, any, any further discussion? Christian, roll call.
Clarify who seconded the motion.
Miguel.
Board Member Gala.
Aye.
Board Member Capra.
Aye.
Board Member Owens.
Aye.
Board Member Panky.
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin.
Aye.
Chairperson Gilde.
Aye.
Did you come up with the total?
I did rarely rough math. I think it was 1,700.
1,700? Okay. All right. Sir, do you understand what the outcome is? The, the board has agreed, we reduced it greatly. Instead of 500 a day, did 50 a day. But just so there's no confusion with, it may be better where I know that, that we spoke to rubbish and garbage. But you're being called out by, by others in your neighborhood. And I, I don't have who that is or how this came to us. But, but it's an eyesore. I, I would call two if, and you heard other board members say the same. Just, I think it's pretty clear now. I, I, we need you to stay in compliance. And from today now, you have notice that you have to for, for five years, correct?
Forever.
For, forever. But, but you're going to be back in front of us as a, as a repeat offender if this should happen within five years. Do you understand?
I understand your ruling.
Okay.
I don't agree with it.
Okay.
Is there a step I can take to have counsel and have this continued?
It's been ruled upon counsel. I can't speak to the legal end of it.
So the decision has been made and the ruling of the board has been made, you have the opportunity to appeal their decision within 30 days. You may need a transcript of these proceedings, a verbatim transcript.
And I can pick them up at City Hall?
That would be a question I would have to defer to the clerk.
We don't produce verbatim transcripts.
So the, the notice will have said, the original notice, that verbatim transcript may be required to appeal the decision of the board. So that, that's not something the city can provide you with, but.
Or my lawyer could get.
Possibly. I can't speak to what your lawyer could, could be able to obtain.
It's got to be like public. It doesn't have like, things are, how do you say? Things are open to the public to see, public, I don't know the terminology.
Does he have an opportunity to present himself to the city manager as part of that appeal? I don't know.
That, that would not be part of the appeal process?
Officer Owens.
Typically, appeals are held at the circuit court level as far as verbatim transcripts. It's typically at the expense of the respondent to hire their own recorder for those transcripts, to have them actually taken during a hearing.
Very good.
Okay, okay. Thank you. All right. That brings us to our non-compliance case 600.
The next item to be heard, let's see, we have case number 2024 CE001875 for the record. Chris Elbon, Code Compliance Inspector at the City of Winter Springs. I have been sworn, I request this presentation and testimony be submitted as part of the official record. The address for this property is 964 Papaya Lane for violation of IPMC Section 302.4 weeds. On January 28th, 2025, a public hearing was held before the City of Winter Springs Code Enforcement Board in which the respondents were found to be in violation of Section 302.4 weeds. The 2024 International Property Maintenance Code and issued an order requiring the respondents to correct the violation on or before February 12th, 2025, where a fine of $100 per day would be imposed for a violation of Section 302.4 weeds beginning on February 13th, 2025 and continuing, continuing until the violation is corrected. Case summary, February 18th, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the referenced property and found that the violation remained for the Section 302.4 weeds and executed an affidavit of non-compliance. Exhibits one through three. This is Exhibit One of 964 Papaya Lane. Exhibit Two for the side yard. And Exhibit Three with the high grass and weeds in the side rear yard area. On February 25th, 2025, notice of compliance hearing was sent to the property owners by USPS certified mail with return receipt requested. March 5th, 2025, the notice of compliance hearing was delivered to the property owners. On April 1st, 2025, I conducted a reinspection of the reference property and found that the violation remained. Exhibits four through five. Exhibit Four of 964 Papaya Lane. And Exhibit Five of the side rear yard area with the high grass and weeds. That's what we're seeing over the height of the fence. See here, and we have a follow-up that was conducted prior to today's hearing. The, the last inspection that was performed on the property, April 21st, 2025, for 964 Papaya Lane, Exhibit Six, and the high grass and weeds in the side rear yard area. And staff recommendation, staff recommends the Code Enforcement Board find the respondents had not complied with the order issued by the Code Enforcement Board on January 31st, 2025, impose a fine of $100 per day for the violation of Section 302.4 weeds of the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code beginning on February 13th, 2025 and continuing until the violation is corrected. That concludes my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, could you go back to the pictures, please? And just point out with your laser what you're saying the weeds are? And is it, is it a certain height? They, they can't be over like 10 inches or something like that?
Sure. And the, it looks like the rear yard area that we've got high grass and weeds.
Okay.
Under the Winter Springs City ordinance and IPMC, cannot exceed 10 inches in height. I don't have an exact height, but this may be a six-foot fence and we're exceeding the fence.
Ten feet.
Oh, yeah.
And in lay terms, I believe it's over 10 inches.
I think I asked this question last time. To me, that looks like, like an ornamental grass. I don't know.
Yeah, I recall the conversation last time.
Yeah.
And I also recall last time the respondent was a no-show as well.
Yes.
And it looks like we're in the same scenario.
Mm-hmm.
For a refresher, can you go back to Chapter Two of IPMC and give us that, the definition of weeds? Because I think in there, it actually did include the statement, grasses generally apply.
Let me pull that.
Well, she's looking in front of that fence, under that tree. Is that all weed growth as well?
Yes, see, to me, it looks like you do have ornamental there, but there is some weed growth in front of it.
In front of it.
There's absolutely weed growth here.
It's a little bit of a mix.
Let's see. Yes, so under the IPMC 304.2, weeds or plant growth in excess of the jurisdiction's chosen height, here 10 inches, no noxious weeds. Weeds would be all grasses, annual plants and vegetation other than trees or shrubs. And not cultivated flowers or gardens. Again, the board could determine whether it is of the opinion that this fits the definition of weeds per the IPMC.
Were you able to talk to the respondent about this?
There has been no communication from the respondent and the Code Compliance Division except for notices sent, but no calls, emails or other correspondence.
I had, if my notes are correct here, this is the fifth time this property, the fifth time this property's been in front of the board since April 2022. Is, the, do you agree this is a, this property has been in violation? This isn't the first time?
No, it is not. This property has been before the board previously for accumulation of rubbish and debris, which is currently still accumulating fines because it has not been corrected.
Okay.
Didn't look like this house was a rental. Miguel?
I mean, the, the property record that was provided in our, our note shows that this particular property is being claimed for homestead exemption since 2006. So it's a homestead.
They, based on what I recall from previous hearing, it is owner occupied as far as reasoning for non-compliance. I could not answer that.
If my math is correct, I'm showing 68 days since February 13th.
Well, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter because it, because it continues to.
Yeah, it just starts from there.
It, it just continues to amass. But I think, I think what you're seeing, what we're seeing here is a pattern.
Yes.
Is, is a pattern of just total disregard for the city codes. You had an issue before that apparently is still ongoing. And now you've got this issue, which is again, now in non-compliance.
Yep, and no response.
And no response.
Yep. I would, would agree. Any other comments, issues?
It's just a shame that the respondent isn't present.
I don't disagree. Unless someone else has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, let me give it a shot here. I might, I move to find that the photographs and testimony of Code Officer Chris Elbon clearly show that there is sufficient support to substantiate the issues present with the property as it relates to a violation of International Property Maintenance Code, IPMC 307.1 weeds, and that the respondent is in violation of IPMC 307 dot 1, and that the penalty set forth in this board's previous order dated 28 January 2025 shall be imposed consistent with that order.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, board? Christian?
I was just gonna comment again that it would be nice if the respondent was here so we could talk to them about this, but they chose not to come.
Before, can I get clarification on the IPMC number? Because the paper says 302.4.
302.4.
And you said 307.1.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were all.
That was a good catch.
Talking about the same thing.
Yeah, IPMC 302.4 weeds. Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
And a second on the corrective.
Yeah, correct that.
Christian, roll call.
Board Member Gallo.
Aye.
Board Member Capra.
Aye.
Board Member Owens.
Aye.
Board Member Panky.
Aye.
Vice Chair Martin.
Aye.
Chair Gilde.
Aye.
All right, are there, that concludes cases. Are there any other issues, concerns, questions that we need to discuss before we adjourn? No? All right. This regular, regular board meeting for Code Enforcement is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.